Roll call. Commissioner Wright.
Here.
Mayor, Mayor Brown.
Here.
Kid, here.
Austin.
Here.
Stresler.
Here.
Bosbloom.
Here.
Thank you.
This is being recorded.
Thank you. I have a motion to approve the agenda.
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda as it stands.
Second, all those in favor?
Aye.
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 Unanimous, thank you. Conflict of interest? Any conflict of interest? No? If not, we will move on to correspondence.
All the correspondence that I have pertains to the public hearing.
Okay, thank you, Dale. And is there a representative here from Pacific Health that we can introduce? Or?
I am.
Okay.
Alejandro Lucas.
Okay. Very good, thank you. Thanks for coming. Anyone else that's visiting or? No? Okay, welcome. Okay, as a courtesy to those in attendance who would ask that cell phones be turned off or sit in their silent room. Public appearance, persons wishing to address the commissioners on subjects other than those scheduled are requested to do so at this time. When addressing the commissioners, please come to the podium and give your name and address for the record. In order to conduct a timely meeting, a three-minute time limit per person has been established by municipal code section two dash eighteen. Amendments to California Government Code section five four nine five zero prohibit the commission from taking action on a specific item until it appears on the agenda. Okay, the public hearings and application from James Bala for a special use permit to allow for a 2,150 square foot Pacific Clinics clubhouse located at nine two three Front Street, Needles, California, in the city of Needles, California, in the C two general commercial zone, also known as APN zero one eight six dash one zero two dash zero four dash zero zero zero. Staff report.
Madam Chairman, let me have a couple introductory comments. Our first exposure to what is being proposed was, we would say, all was contacted about a homeless shelter in the El Cares. And this is not a homeless shelter, and it's not in the El Cares. The next was that it was a facility that was going to be put next to the museum. And we finally were able to secure a contact with Pacific Clinics, and we met and explained what the permitting went on. And it has at various times been defined as a clubhouse, or a mental health clinic, or now it's described as a social club. And in describing the process required for approval, it is a social club, according to our zoning code, is required to have a special use permit. And a special use permit requires a planning commission, a complete application, and a public hearing before the planning commission. And that decision is final unless it is appealed. But anybody who is affected can appeal. So the applicant, if they're agreed by the conditions or an action, they can appeal. Anybody else who's in the room, or submitted a letter, or has an opinion, they could appeal, and then it would go to the city council.
I'm gonna interrupt you right there. You said, or anybody that's written a letter, or is in the room, or is affected.
Yes.
Regardless of whether they've objected.
Right.
Thank you.
Right, because.
That's okay, you don't have to. I just want to make sure that I want to be clear on that.
Okay. We had, there was, there were some improvements done to the building that were done without a building permit. We went in and corrected that. There was a business license that was issued for the facility. The application for the business license identified a general office, not a social club, or a service center. And so a business license wasn't due to Pacific Clinics for an office. Now, that's the category, like a real estate office, or a, an insurance office.
What, a doctor's office?
A, well, there, there's a, there as a clinic. But yes, generally the same. It's, but it's not a.
Well, you may have different help.
Yeah. I want to point out that, because I think I want to make sure that we all understand why we're here. We're here not to decide whether the use should be allowed in the city. We're not here to decide which, or, we're not here to talk about how you feel about people that might need this, or need a facility like this. We are solely responsible for determining, determining what is it? What are the externalities, or what are the impacts to the neighborhood and adjoining properties in terms of property values or desirability of the area? And where? So from the very beginning, we've encouraged Pacific Clinics to identify all of the sites that they look at in town, to take a look at those external impacts, and be prepared to talk about why they believe this is the best site in comparison to all those others. Because that wasn't done, that is why our recommendation is we, from a staff level, this public hearing, before the letters, we cannot, we do, we do not, have not given you a recommendation of support for this facility at this location. The applicant bears the burden of describing what they're gonna do, and so we could, everybody can identify impacts, and then you have the unenviable task of determining, is it compatible? Is it consistent with the general plan? Will it cause harm to property values or other parts of the social fabric? The city has not approved this project. The city has not given its preference on this project. You, and if the council gets involved, you will define the city's positions. So I just wanted to kind of set the stage. This is a locational decision. I think we can all agree that people that are in need of mental health, or people that are, are homeless, you know, there's often a large overlap in those two populations. It's not whether they need help, it's where. And I think we can all agree that we need to provide help for those that genuinely cannot help themselves. And those two populations fall in those two categories, to me. So with that.
Okay. Thank you. Patrick, did you have anything? Any other staff?
Sure, let's run through this real quick. In front of you, resolution number four dash six dash twenty-two two C regarding nine two three Front Streets, the deal six, two thousand twenty-two, already stated that there is a special use permit to allow twenty-one hundred and fifty square foot Pacific Clinics clubhouse located at the previous stated address, located in the center of Needles. So as you can see from the map, located off of Front Street, between G and F Street, across from the El Cares. In the surrounding area, there's a museum, there's a couple thrift shops, Mexican food restaurant, a insurance office, a bar, pizza place, and, and other businesses, commercial businesses in the surrounding area. Here's just a zoom in on the location, Pacific, there's two, two suites there, and so they're only taking half the suite. So here's some background, special use permit, again, is to allow the Pacific Clinics clubhouse, they'll give stated addresses, TIs, tenant improvements will occur to Suite B, fortunately existing building, building formerly a site of the Diamond Mine Jewelry Store for the purchases of a Pacific Clinics clubhouse, a walk Monday through Friday, from nine AM to five PM, with three staff members on average of five fifteen daily attendance. The project site is located in the general commercial C two zoning designation, which requires per the permissible use table, a social club in a building with a gross area not exceeding thirty-five hundred square feet is subject to a special use permit and will be reviewed by the planning commission, according to terms of use today. Civic Clubhouse is a member-run, drop-in, social support club for ages eighteen and up, who have a history or currently struggling with mental health issues. Pacific Clinics Clubhouse foregrounds operate under contract with seven year old county Department of Behavioral Health. The new clubhouse program will work in collaboration with the Needles, the Department of Behavioral Health Clinic. Civic Clinics operates three other clubhouses, San Bernardino County, Rialto, Yacuvali, and the San Diego. Pacific Clinics has looked at various buildings throughout the city, but determined that nine two three Front Street meets their needs. Quote, clubhouse assists members in developing and maintaining skills for functioning positively and correctly, you know, living, work, social environments. This involves the creation of an environment that provides social, educational, vocational development opportunities, and enable members to lead personal satisfying, socially productive lives. So right in front of you, what you have is a floor plan of the site. We worked with them to, they've submitted this, and we reviewed it, and there is a reception area, there is a TV area, a pool table, a shower, a snack bar with prepackaged food only, recreational activities, arts and crafts, video games, board games, internet search assistance, housing, food resources, clothing resources. So this is what the floor plan will look like, as previously stated with those uses. Here's what the site looks like today, looking at the site. Again, as Mr. Daniels had pointed out, special use permit requires to have these findings in your packet. You have findings that they have provided to you in that resolution, so you, that is based on facts that they've provided us, and it's up to you to determine your own set of findings, through this board. And so we will get your opinion on, and direction from the board, and then accordingly bring these back, bring these findings back based on the testimony and the direction of the board proceeding. And so, but the conditions of approval that you do have in front of you today. The clinic shall observe quiet hours after ten PM every day, this shift changes, patient intake discharged, so after ten PM, no visitors will occur at the site. The applicant shall identify staffing, supervision, and security arrangements appropriate to the facility. We talked with Rose, a member of the director of facilities for Pacific Clinics, and she had proposed that instead of a twenty-four hour onsite supervisor be required, because there won't be individuals there twenty-four hours a day, like I said, it's only from nine to five, that a on-call after-hours staff be required. So that's just a recommendation from the applicant. Staff shall conduct daily patrol throughout the neighborhood. It includes the areas between Front Street, G Street, dirt street, and C Street. This area may be revised based on local conditions, because the area scope each segment may be visited daily to help outreach, involve contacting businesses, understanding conditions to ensure that, you know, the, the conditions in the area are satisfactory. And so with that, we are seeking directions from the planning on the findings that are required to approve or deny this application. And with that, I now open any questions you might have. The applicant and representatives from Pacific Clinics are also on the line.
All right, I'll move to any questions, but from, oh, I'm sorry, did open the public hearing. So we'll open the public hearing. If there's anyone that would like to come forward, you have three minutes. What's your name and address?
Virginia Tasker out of Needles at.
I'm sorry, can you say your name again?
Virginia Tasker.
I don't think her microphone is on.
Yeah, it's on. Start the timer.
Sure.
We'll give you your full three minutes, Virginia. Can you hear me now?
Yes. So I live in Needles at Spike subdivision.
Yes.
I don't really want to give my physical address.
No, I'm asking for your name. I couldn't hear your name.
Virginia Tasker.
Thank you.
T A S K E R.
Thank you.
Okay. Anyway, Rick asked some of my questions, because I was, I understand that our codes or whatever are in place that they could have this facility at this location already, and they're asking for basically you to supersede that and give them a conditional use permit, and I don't see a reason to do that. You know, it's downtown in our historical area. I volunteer at the Needles Museum. We get people that follow Route sixty-six, we get them from all over the country. Last week alone, we had a couple from Paris, France, we had a couple from Uruguay, I think that's Mexico. And I think that there would be, I personally don't like the idea, I would be a little intimidated, have the people, we already have a problem in the park, the people that are over there sleeping, eating, peeing, pooping, it's a mess. So I also don't want it, because I understand that the city recently set aside the area that we're talking about, maybe a bigger area too, I'm not sure, for, to start projects like Williams has done, and that, and, and I don't think that this type of facility is, works well with that plan to try and get a historical area. I think that's it. So I'm asking you not to approve it.
Thank you.
Madam Chairman, I'd like to have the applicant give their presentation.
Sure, go on up and list your name and address, please.
Good afternoon, my name is Alejandro Lucas. Excuse me. My name is Alejandro Lucas, and I appreciate you giving me the time to be here today. I am the regional executive director at Pacific Clinics, a statewide children, youth, and adult mental health and substance use agency. Pacific Clinics is a nonprofit organization that has provided critical services to the communities throughout California, and has built a solid reputation and track record for providing quality services to some of the most vulnerable members of our community. I would like to take this opportunity to thank you for providing me the opportunity to speak upon the Needles Clubhouse proposal. The clubhouse program was established over twenty years ago in a partnership with local communities in Los Angeles and San Bernardino County. Our services help adults recovering from mental illness, or mental illness coupled with another health disorder such as diabetes or heart disease, and create a place to engage in awareness in the community of other caring and encouraging persons. The Pacific Clinics Clubhouse program has also provided activities, as outings, holiday celebrations, et cetera, with other clubhouses from San Bernardino, thereby enhancing social interactions and support from peers. I'm here today to clarify, inform, and shed light on our services, and hopefully correct any misunderstandings or concerns held by some of the community members. One concern that we've heard, one of mine, this project would be drugs and homelessness to Needles. Pacific Clinics has a zero drug tolerance policy, which is proven to be highly effective at our clubhouse projects in Los Angeles and San Bernardino County. Our staff are highly trained and skilled at identifying drug-seeking behavior. Staff intercede to have members that exhibit that behavior exit the clubhouse and provide them referrals. The county is also working on a plan to certify all peer partners, of which the clubhouse would have, in substance use disorders. As to concern them that the program will attract homeless individuals to Needles, the clubhouse program has a defined criteria for membership. Individuals participating in the program must show a proof of local residency and have a mental health diagnosis to participate in the program. Data from our other, for our clubhouses, evaluated for twenty years demonstrates no homeless migration surge into those cities due to the strict enrollment criteria. Another concern that we've heard, this project would be a financial drain on the city of Needles. All services for the clubhouse members will be one hundred percent financed by the county of San Bernardino, drawing their funds from the city. The next concern, this project will go in the way of the goal of making Needles a major tourist destination. We applaud the city's mobile effort to make Needles a major tourist destination. We believe the clubhouse program complements the city's goals, particularly when members of the community with high mental health needs are stabilized, thereby reducing the need for costly services, such as hospitalizations, residential care, or intensive services. The savings from these provided services frees fiscal resources that can be dedicated to strategic projects, such as to go to make Needles a major tourist destination. Another concern I would like to address, this project will bring unwanted types of outsiders to the community. Clubhouse members are the members of your own community. They may be sons, daughters, aunts and uncles, grandparents, neighbors, requiring our services. This includes veterans, many of whom are in desperate need of these services and don't have the means or desire to travel twenty-three miles to the Veterans Organization in Bullhead, Arizona. Only the Needles House, the Needles Clubhouse, has forty-five members in this community signed up, two of them are veterans. The last concern I want to address, the current location is going to hurt local businesses. The current clubhouse programs are adjacent to other businesses ranging from office buildings, retail shops, strip malls, restaurants, mini-malls. Any trepidation experienced by local businesses, gained by the mutually beneficial relationship we have built with the local community? We're very adept at doing this. We're experts at doing this. We're one of the best in the states in doing this. In fact, local businesses donate regularly to the clubhouses, and it is an attestation of their positive relationship. Just as important as clarifying any misunderstandings, is providing a clear timeline. In two thousand sixteen, the community planning process, CPP with Dr. Kelly, was presented with signatures from the community of Needles requesting a clubhouse here, two thousand sixteen, the very, your very community. In two thousand nineteen, Department of Behavioral Health decided to contract the Needles clubhouse as a clinic expansion was years away. Two thousand twenty, Pacific Clinics got the contract. Two thousand twenty-one, we began negotiations with landlord, landlord in Needles. I do want to clarify two points. One, there will be no mental health services provided at this location. And the second is that I'm very clear that one of my team members, Rose, has provided a clear history of her failed lease negotiations at two other sites, that I'm aware of, Rose, speak to that. I would like to say that we need to provide accessibility and timely services to the most vulnerable members of your community. The current location is violent for easy accessibility for the clubhouse members. Locations, our location is suggested at the outskirts of the city, where Department of Behavioral Health by the hospital runs contrary, contrary to the delivery of timely and accessible services to this vulnerable population. It would only serve to be an additional barrier to its members. Dignity. Dignity is what our clubhouses give its members. Dignity is what we wish to help provide your community members who are highly in need. I want to thank the city council for your time, my attention, and that you know that my colleagues on this call, as well as myself, are there to answer any questions that you or any of the community members may have. Thank you for your time.
Could I ask you, what other locations did you look at?
Could you please speak to the addresses that we have before?
I could speak for Pacific Clinics. This is Rose Entrega, Director of Facilities for Pacific Clinics. Last year, or a little over a year ago, we looked at six locations, thirteen hundred Bailey, one zero zero four Broadway, eleven one five Front Street, eight oh nine Bush Street.
Rose, can you please go a little bit slower? I'm trying to write down what you're saying.
Oh, I'm sorry.
And can you start with the second ones, there, there are seven Broadway, you said?
One zero zero four Broadway. Eleven one five Front Street.
What, Front Street?
Uh huh. Eight zero nine Bush Street. Eleven hundred Broadway. And eight hundred Broadway.
So, so I'm, I'm curious, and you said that you were turned down in all of those locations?
No, actually, when we were looking at the sites, the cost to do the tenant improvements on all those locations, we do not have the budget to do the, all the tenant improvements. And I believe one of the locations was also owned by the city of Needles, and so none of those locations work for the program.
Okay. On, on Bush Street, would have that been next to the fire, the firehouse minister's sites that serve the indigent? Do you know?
Um, you know.
Maybe not, on Bush Street. I might be wrong on that, excuse me.
Unfortunately, the person who was involved in this project is no longer in the company, within, with the company.
Okay.
And I don't recall myself, I'm sorry.
Yeah, okay, thank you. When you, when you say that it'd be a hindrance to the people to get to San, to the San Bernardino Behavioral Health up on the hill, they must go there for services now, I'm guessing? Or?
They may or they may not.
Yeah.
They need to have, they don't have, need to have an active mental health case, they need to have a history of mental health.
Okay. I mean, I, personally, I just, I think that fits so well, because then that's all, you know, community, a health community service, that everything is kind of in that general area, but I was curious if there was anything up on that street that you looked at, and it doesn't look like there was.
Yeah.
Okay. All right, thank you. Any other questions for him?
Yes, Mr. Lucas, remind me again, you mentioned the enrollment criteria, and said something about, you have to show proof of address.
So they need to be a member, they need to be living, have a last address in San Bernardino County, and they have to, and so they have, so we have to have some sort of, some sort of proof of that at some point, and have past experience with a mental health diagnosis or mental health services.
Okay, and are they required, how are they, how do they, how do you verify that they have some sort of history of mental health treatment?
Normally, we take the word for it, but if you have any question, you can contact Department of Behavioral Health, and we can find out the records.
And so you mentioned, there are, there aren't any mental health services.
Correct.
Provided, other than directing to places where they can receive whatever resources they need.
That's correct.
Is that correct?
So I have another question. So you went from, quote, like, I mean, kind of labeling it different throughout the process, and was that because having the right label to get it approved? And was that because having the right label to get it approved? Or when you say that the residents, they don't, they're not necessarily residents here, then the residents of San Bernardino?
Correct.
So how do you monitor them if they're gone, they come back, they're?
So I believe you asked two questions. The first, the first, how do we monitor them? As, as clubhouse members, they can come and go, as, they can come and go as they wish. And then the second question is, what was the second question? Sorry.
When you were changing the definition of what it was, a homeless shelter, a social club, and, and now it's, it was a clubhouse and now a social club.
You would never have put down that this, that mental health reserve because that's not part of our, that's not part of the services that we provide at any other clubhouse. My understanding is through all the applications you've applied as a clubhouse.
Well, now, but it's now a social club.
The, I believe, my understanding is that as, as we're applying, the permit would be under a social club, but it has always been being applied to as a clubhouse.
Is that what it's been applied as?
Yes, so due to the permissible use table, I meant, so due to the permissible use table, and the reason why they have to get a social use permit is because they are listed, so that's our, they call themselves a clubhouse. Our interpretation is that they're a social club, and so that's why they fit within.
Same requirements for both?
Yeah, so that's why they're here in front of you today, is because they are identified as a, as a social club or a clubhouse. If you look at.
Same criteria though.
Yeah, if you look at the letter that was presented in your packet, this is from Pacific Clinics and defines who they are, and this is the criteria that we use too.
Okay, no, I get that. Okay. Kevin, you had a question?
Yes, Alejandro, I had a question. You have, you were talking about three other sites, three other locations.
Yes.
Are their hours the same nine to five, Monday through Friday, as this location is proposed?
Yes, they are.
And have there been issues, I mean, any letters or any problems with the other businesses where clients are congregating ahead of those hours? Or say, outside or after those hours? Because I think that's a great worry here.
I appreciate the question, and no, there haven't been. In fact, through DBH records, the records, that we've been doing such a great job that they actually are extending and trying to grow our contract because how we operate, how we operate with them. So as I mentioned, we have the Commerce Center, shopping malls, retail centers, business centers, at no time over 15 years, this is from DBH, have landlords not related or expressed concern from any surrounding businesses.
And then also, then the representatives, is it an on-call situation also? Because originally I thought there was going to be a 24-hour person, which would possibly, you know, help with some of the issues that have been happening at the park and stuff. But now it's gone to an on-call, you know, and sometimes locating an on-call person, that may be on-call, they may be an hour away, two hours away.
And I would agree with having a 24-hour person onsite if you were open 24 hours. We do have on-call supervisors, and we'll take them through, that have worked, that have worked at other, our other clubhouse facilities. So it's a total of four, three of them that are in San Bernardino, in San Bernardino County.
Okay, thank you. So those employees come out here to work the nine to five?
Yes, they do.
Okay.
In fact, we've had some very successful food, food giveaways that were, the food giveaways were put together by clubhouse members that organize themselves, put the food together, and on a monthly basis, we donate food. I participated in one of them, out by, out by DBH, you know, long line of cars that come and, come to pick it up.
And, and just so, you probably know that too, but when they do the pickup for food at San Bernardino County is up on the hill. They use the drive-through by the library in San Bernardino Sheriff's Department a lot of the times. So people do come up to that area a lot.
They do, but that isn't necessarily the, the clubhouse population. This is open for, this is open for the residents of Needles.
Okay.
Alejandro, why was initially sought after as a business license, the business license of an office? Why, why did, why was it sought as an office?
I'd like to defer to Chris Chirano and Rose for this, about the application process. Rose?
I'm sorry.
It's okay.
When we were doing the business license, we provided the general description of the program. And when we were on the general description, pretty much we have, we provide professional services for the site. And then that's how we, we categorized it as a professional service because it's, it's technically, you know, we have a therapist there, we have a mental health worker. So it's, it's how we categorize it as a professional service. For the application.
Rose, did you let them know that there was going to be washing facilities and bathing facilities in this, in this business at the time?
There's, there's no shower there. There's no, there's no shower there at the site.
There's showers in the diagram. Three showers.
Oh, I think that, that would be the, I think that's a proposal, or is that just the kitchen and the laundry?
No, there's the laundry and the, then a shower area.
Two ADA bathrooms and one non-ADA.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's on the site plan.
Yeah, I can verify that. I've been there as well.
So you did not let them know that there was going to be showers there?
I think the general description was provided on the business application.
Okay, so you did, you did not let them know that there was going to be washing facilities and showering, bathing facilities there? I think that's what makes it go to a different.
I think during the, during the start of that business application process, the shower was not on the plan.
When did that, when did your use change in how you were going to use this? So it wasn't Pacific Clinics at first?
Well, because the initial, the other San Bernardino clubhouse that we have did not have a shower. So I think the change was done after the fact.
Okay. Patrick, I had a question for you. The social club aspect of this, can you help me, would like a YMCA be a social club too? Is that sort of?
Right, so.
They have showering facilities, I believe, the type of facility?
Yeah. So one thing, first things first, real quick, the site plan that was on that application was the original site plan that was submitted. So if you look at the application that was provided to you today, that is actually the original one, but obviously, as we went through the process, when you said the site plan evolved, and so that's how we got today. But again, this is a special, this is an application for a special use permit, not for the business license.
But the original application, that's what he's asking about, was for an office space. And this, this is for offices, correct. No shower, no game room, and then?
Right, but that wasn't submitted for the business license. I'm just, because you have this, I don't want you to see this, no. So that being said, to answer your second question, educational, cultural, religious, philanthropic, social, or fraternal uses would be considered a club. And so those are, and then it's defined in that, so that's, that's how we use that. So trade school, colleges, churches, synagogues, libraries, museums. In this case, it's located, social club, located within a building designed and previously occupied by a resident or within a building having a gross floor area not exceeding 3,500 square feet.
But she's saying they're also giving services, because she's saying there could be a counselor and other, and therapist there.
Okay.
So that was not listed on the applicant?
We have, we have, correct. So, well, let me read you what was on the application. So Pacific Clubhouse Program, 903 Front Street, 2,150 square foot. Description attached, I think that's defined by the description. And then we anticipate three staff, work each day, anticipate an average of attendance, five to 15. Not all members, we have a car, will attend. So this is, this is what we were going off of, and then we got verification later. We got this, and we said, okay, really give us a verification of what you are, and then they gave us this letter right here, which is for your application. And then when we went with, you know, the clubhouse, there's a member who run, dropped in social support club. So that's how we got to that identification in the code.
Okay. Alejandro, you had mentioned in your, in your descriptions that you have a zero tolerance for drugs.
Correct.
So are you doing drug testing of all your clubhouse members?
I'd like to defer to Mauricio on this. Mauricio, can you speak to that and how often that occurs? Mauricio?
Yeah, I'm here.
Thank you. Can you please speak to the drug testing and how often it occurs?
Well, you know, drug testing is not required at the clubhouse. What we do is if.
Mauricio, I'm sorry.
Would you give his name so that we can get it on the record and then we'll come back to him?
Absolutely. I'm Mauricio Cruz, the clubhouse supervisor.
Down on the screen too. All right, thank you. Sorry to interrupt. Go ahead, Mauricio.
Yeah, I was saying, you know, drug testing is not required at the clubhouse, but we always aware that, you know, if our members are going through difficult situations in that area, and we always find a way to refer them to institutions that can help them with their drug abuse. And of course, you know, we try to have people from different agencies having presentations regarding this issue, and we keep informed then of what resources they have in the community to get help to get out of that situation with the drugs.
So that sounds like the answer is no, you don't do drug testing.
We don't do, we don't do drug testing at the location. We refer them to locations where they can get tests and they can get help for their drug use.
If they show up, if they're affected, they're asked to leave.
Okay, if I might ask a question, Mr. Lucas?
Just, just a moment. Sorry, we'll get to you next.
Okay, so, so you have zero tolerance, but you don't drug test them so that, to confirm zero tolerance?
That's correct.
Okay. Do you get, do the, do the members, do they come with referrals from medical professionals? Or just like you said, you take their word for it that they have mental conditions?
We get refunded from within the community.
I'm sorry.
From within the community. As we get through word of mouth, we get, we get referrals to the actual clubhouse to become members. And we let them know, we let them know what the criteria is, and then if we have to do our due diligence, like I said, we take their word for it with the mental health. I've been to every single one of our clubhouses, and I could tell you that it's, it's very, it's very clear who's suffering. And, but if we have any questions at all, then we, then we do our due diligence and contact the county to try to find out any sort of record.
Okay, the last question I have is, you mentioned that they, they have to have a residency in San Bernardino. What sort of verification are you, are you doing on their residency? And is it their current residence or just a past resident of San Bernardino County?
Mauricio, can you please speak to that, about the residency?
Sorry, could you repeat the question? I have a problem with my, the way that I get the signal. Can you repeat the question, please?
Mauricio, the question is, how do we verify that they have a residency in San Bernardino County?
How we? I have a trouble with the, with the signal. Can you repeat the question, please?
Sure. Mauricio, the question is, how do we verify that they are a member of San Bernardino County?
Well, we usually, you know, when they fill out their application, they have to have, you know, we have to have the address and phone number, all the information of the, the person where they're living. And as long as they live in the county, we find, you know, we accept them as a members. What happened is, you know, while we have experience, sometimes people move from one city to other, but they still been a member of the clubhouse. And so if, for example, if they living in Jacob Valley and they decide to move to Rialto, we continue to work with that person, and they have a place where they can go to receive the resources and the services they need, even if they move to another location.
There's no way to really verify where they are, because they, I mean, in reality, if they're in San Bernardino, they go to Riverside, or they go to LA, they come back out. I mean, it's, it's sort of at will. So, I mean, I don't know how you would. I guess they would put that on their application, but in reality, you're taking word for that, I guess, your word for it. Yeah.
I guess it happens, yes.
So you're taking their word for it, you're not verifying their residency?
We don't. We take their word, and I, you know, all the experience that I have in all these years, what I know, our members live close to the clubhouse. They don't really travel that much. They have to use public transportation, or some of them have cars, but it's people from the community. We know them, we know for years that they live in the community, they keep attending for years. So it's, it's no way to verify if they moved to another place, but we pretty sure know that our members is usually very close to the location that we have.
They're not required to, to let you know when they move?
Required to what? Sorry?
To let you know if they move?
We do. If they move, they have to, you know, let us know, we do another application. If they change the name, if they change the address, they should let us know. So we, in case that we need to send mail or any other information, we should have that information. So they know if they moving or changing any other personal information, they should let us know, so.
Okay, thank you. Rose?
You are.
If I might ask a question for you, Mr. Lucas, it probably pertains to what the other commissioner was asking too. Do you consider drug counseling as part of the mental health aspect of it with your members?
With Pacific Clinics, we are the tip of the spear with integrated care, which is a combination of mental health services and substance abuse, drug services. The clubhouse site is not a location to provide mental health services. SUD services, substance use disorder services aren't provided there, aren't provided there either. It's a place where they're receiving, they're receiving interpersonal skills, they're receiving social. They're working, they may well choose to work in various clubhouse units, as a snack bar, computer lab, maintenance, how to apply, how to dress for a job, how to apply for a job, those are those sorts of skills. But that's not what's going to, mental health and substance abuse disorder treatment doesn't happen at the clubhouses. But we do refer them out for those. Does that answer your question?
Yeah, I suppose it does.
Okay, Charles?
How long have you been doing this?
Have I been with Pacific Clinics? I've been with Pacific Clinics for almost three years. I've been with Pacific Clinics for almost three years. The clubhouse program has been in existence for a little bit beyond 20 years.
I don't really have a question, but I've got a statement that I don't understand how we can vote on something. The city is not recommending any, any of this. The names of the group have changed three or four times. It's, there's so many deviations, discrepancies. It's like you guys want a blank check for us to vote on, and I don't think it's going to happen with this committee. I think it's a bit less of a timer. It's my opinion.
Any other questions for Alexandra? Problem?
I have lots. Does Kevin want to go first?
I will get to you too.
You want to go first?
Sure, sure. I did, I did, I kind of got cut off. I didn't get to finish.
I'm sorry, Michael.
You had talked about this location being, as far as accessibility. How did you come to that conclusion? Are there more people that have mental issues near that location rather than anywhere else in town?
All of our clubhouse, our clubhouse model, it makes sure that it's close to centralized, like a, like a. All of our clubhouse, our clubhouse model makes sure that it's close to centralized, like a, like a metro station or bus stops. In this case, we also have the, the train station direct, directly across. Now, I don't expect in this situation, a lot of our clients to be. Clubhouse members to be coming on the train station, but being centralized in downtown, we feel would be the best, the best to be able to provide them those services.
Even though, even though. If you were to redirect them to public health services. Those are all up on Bailey. So it does seem, it, it makes for a good argument that perhaps. This type of. Facilities. Maybe should be close to those. That's an argument that can be made. Transit goes by there, the bus goes by there. Just as it does down here. Bottom line on all of these things so far that we've talked about. Are kind of secondary to, to a bigger issue. Have you or any of? Your. Co-workers, have you followed? What's going on with the city and what we're, what we're, how we're trying to improve our town? Have you been to any of the? Open house, general plan, meetings, anything like that?
Myself personally, no. I do know that the, the former, the former director that was supervising this project, he would come, he would come out. I know Mauricio Cruz is out here about at least once every, every two weeks. We try to get involved in the community to get to know more. Obviously, residents in the town would be much more honed to the rhythms of what, of what's going on. But we do make it a point to get to know what's, what's happening in the community and what's important to the community.
Well, the reason I ask is because. In recent months. We've really been, we've really been. Involving the community in these open house meetings to help decide. What the priority is for this town. And to help, help it grow and what are we going to focus on? And it's been determined. That the focus. Is preserving that downtown area as a tourist destination. I, I have a hard time believing that a place like this complements our goal of. Being a tourist destination. I have a hard time seeing that. I could be. Educated, convinced otherwise. I, right now, I have a hard time seeing that. So I asked you about your knowledge of. Kind of what's going on in the town generally. Because we've been working in, and the community's been involved in really trying to. To decide what our direction is, and that's what we've decided is. We really want to protect and enhance and grow, especially exactly that part of town. And I think a lot of the people in the community. Don't see this as. In harmony with. With what we're aiming for. And, and it's not to say, it makes no judgment about. The legitimacy of this type of endeavor. And it, but like as Mr. Daniels said, it's really about where it's at. And all these other things about whether or not to provide services or for drug testing, whether they live here in town. Me, those are all secondary. The main thing is. This kind of service. Doesn't fit in with what we're aiming for here in town. To, to promote our town. And as much as it's needed and as valid as it is. A different location. Is probably. The solution.
Finished, Michael?
Yeah, that's all.
Okay.
Well stated.
Uh, Will, Will, yeah, go ahead. We'll get you. I know you're gonna take a while, so go ahead, Will.
Well. Kind of go over what Mike just said too. I, I think. What you're offering is a good service that's needed in the community. But is it completely impossible to find anywhere else in a little bit more compatible location? Because I think what Mike was saying was that. The town wants to develop more of a tourist oriented type of business in that location, and it just kind of sticks out a little bit from. You know, having shops and whatnot, to have this counseling center in the middle of it all, right in the heart of what we'd like to be the tourist hub. Is there nowhere else in town at all that might be? More compatible, if you will. You, you have not been able to find anywhere else in the whole town that would work for you?
Well, as Rose had mentioned, we, we had six other attempts. Before we, before we came onto this, this address. Are there other locations that could, could work? Yeah, there are. Has a lot of work and. Was what in tears and running into the current location? Yes, there has. I would invite, and I'd be happy to give a tour to any, anyone here to come see what the, the gem that we've been able to create there.
Kevin?
No, I'm good.
No? Barbara, go ahead.
You, one of those, I'm gonna follow behind a couple other commissioners' comments before I start my own. On what happened, why was the Bailey location turned down? That's right where the hospitals and all the medical care is.
Rose, can you please speak to as to why? I keep referring to, Rose is our director of the city, so she knows the specifics to it. Rose, can you please speak to why the Bailey property didn't work out?
Uh, the Bailey location, it was our VP of Operations. Who recently retired, who was the one who was looking at that location about a little over a year ago. And that location did not work out. From what I recall is that it would cost a lot of money. To do all the tenant improvements because it was just. Just an open, you know, space. And at that time, I mean, even up to now, we do not have the budget. The county is not giving us any money. To do any tenant improvements in order for us to get started with the program. So the Bailey location did not work for us. Because of a budgetary reason.
Okay, thank you. So I'm out also, so next question. I'm doing these off the top of my head right now. You said you had forty-five applicants that you farmed to, to get to sign up?
About clubhouse members within the community that are ready for the facility to open.
Okay, so since it's supposed to be people that reside in the county of San Bernardino, which is the largest county in the entire United States. How many of those forty-five live in our residents of Needles, all forty-five?
I would be happy, if you can give me the date, I'd be happy to get you that information and then send it.
You don't even know out of the forty-five, how many are local?
Not off the top of my head.
Usually we have, this is a very family oriented community, and most of these people, I think, kind of take care of their own. They don't just throw them out in the street. If they have dementia or something, that might be a different story, but they're not really left to walk, wander around either. We have choppers overhead on the river everywhere if somebody gets loose that has dementia. So this is a very family and children and elder oriented community where we take care of our own. So the fact that there are forty-five people out there that need services like this, that's why I'm asking. I don't understand that, okay, and they're very likely could be because I'm kind of a hermit myself. I don't get out much and socialize at social clubs. So I used to in the day, but not anymore. So I don't see that. I don't see evidence of it anywhere. I don't see them on the streets. I don't see a problem. Now, there is a problem in there somewhere, and I know where some of them are probably located. If that's where the one live, that's their choice sometimes. We were trained, I'm out of LA myself, and we were trained how to deal with homeless that are on the streets. And some of them want to be there. They want to be there. They don't want anything to do with anybody else, and they're happy living where they're living. And they want to stay that way. That's their choice, as long as they're allowed to be in those places. So out of these forty-five, apparently they live someplace, they reside someplace in the city where they wouldn't be qualified to be a member. So I am curious, do you know, you don't even know offhand approximately how many people are residents of Needles?
I can defer to Mauricio as a handy. Mauricio, did you hear the question?
Yes, I heard. What I know, you know, to start, the reason why the county from the beginning wants to open this program in Needles. Is because they received letters from residents on Needle. They receive, I think, over thirty letters. From residents and needles asking for the services. And the way that we engage people and we find out if they want to be, you know, part of the program is when we do the full distributions. We've been providing information of what is the program about. We gave a very detailed description of what kind of services we provide, that we provide mental health services, the how, you know, the, the activities that we have related to mental health services. How the resources they can get if they can be attending the clubhouse. And that's how we have people. Becoming members in the last months from the people who'd been. Being part of the food distributions.
Okay.
And they know that we are providing mental health services.
Excuse me, I'm sorry, you interrupted.
Sorry.
Haven't you, didn't I just understand, maybe I missed it too. Didn't you state that you don't provide mental health services? You instead refer them elsewhere? You have a therapist, but you don't provide mental health services on the premises?
We don't provide psychiatric services, but mental health can be involved also with the recovery model that clubhouse is based on the recovery model. And part of that is, you know, increase of socialization, develop social skills, communication, daily living skills, finding resources in community. And such things. But we don't have anybody licensed in the facility, but we work in that direction that.
So you do, so you do provide what was being asked in those thirty-some letters, mental health services on the property?
Well, it's more specific related to the clubhouse. As far as I know, the letters were sent directly to the county, not to Pacific Clinics, and that's why the county is being working in the, you know, trying to open this facility.
Right, right.
Yes, Lucas wants to. Jump in there.
Yes, the recovery model is considered somewhat under the umbrella of mental health services, but it isn't built or worked towards as, as therapy. So for example, a mental health, a mental health worker can work on socialization skills with somebody. That's considered in the realm of mental health, but it's not therapy. And it's not psychiatric services.
So the recovery. Model or whatever advice or counseling you're giving to the members. Is under the same umbrella as mental health, but yet it's different on more detailed parts of the county plan?
The letters were sent to the, to the county, were specifically asking for a clubhouse.
I'm sorry, I was directing the question to Mr. Lucas. I'm sorry. You can't see me, I guess, so. That's okay.
Can you please ask the question again?
I forgot it, no. So in explaining the umbrella of mental health, the recovery services you are giving on the premises. You're not, you did state you weren't giving any mental, mental health services. But now their recovery services are part of the umbrella of mental health? Is that what you're saying?
Yeah, with the peer advocates, the peer partners that are there. They can't do therapy because they're not therapists, they're not licensed by the state of California. The peers are able, they're certified to be able to provide the recovery model. So this would be being able to lead conversations, being able to be specifically trained on, on socialization skills, those sort of things.
Okay, so it would be like an attorney. You can have a paralegal or illegal secretary, but they can't practice law.
I wouldn't go that far. I wouldn't go that far.
Well, you said you had a therapist. Is she a licensed or certified therapist?
That was, that was, there is not a therapist on site. Yeah, there's not a therapist on site. No, that was mentioned erroneously, so I understand where that came from. It was in my notes to mention it as well.
Okay. Okay, so in answering Commissioner Rass' question, one of them. You said that on the drug tests. You don't do any drug testing. It's based on experience, like maybe a police officer might have or been trained. A sheriff's deputy may have been trained to recognize certain. I was, I went out with a vice narcotics cop for nine years, Sergeant Vice Narcotics in Inglewood. I got trained how to recognize the symptoms, so just by going out with him. I mean, not that he was doing the drugs, but I learned from him. So I understand people can learn to recognize the symptoms with very little training. And these people will probably have very. Obvious exhibitions of symptoms when they come in. So it might be very easy to recognize them, but when you do recognize them, you don't test and you refer them someplace. Where do you, that's what you said. Where do you refer them? Where would you refer them if you were in Needles and that happened?
Mauricio, can you please speak about our referral list?
Well, we're getting to know the community to find what agencies they have that can help with different situations the members present. We know for sure that we have the behavioral, uh, mental health facility there, and we, we are already working with them.
I didn't understand what you say. You know for sure we have. What did you say?
The Department of Behavioral Health.
The County Behavioral Health.
The County Behavioral Health.
Up on Bailey.
Exactly. We, we've been working with them. They know us and if, if, for example, if we need to refer someone, then we will give all the information. We will have contact with the staff and we're gonna who they need to talk and what phone numbers they need to call and any other information they need, we will be provide that information to them. And as, you know, as long as we start getting to know more than the, in the community, what other services we have in the community, we'll be referring them to those services. We, we're gonna be the link so they can access those services.
So the, so the Department of Mental Health on Bailey can help these people immediately when you recognize they're stoned on something or whatever you call it. You can send them up to Bailey and they can help them right now immediately?
I don't, I don't know specifically their procedure or how long it would take for them to accept them. I don't have an answer for that.
So, well, I, I'm not familiar with services they offer, if it's like a hospital in there or not. But would you consider serving, sending them to the hospital? If they don't offer, give it help to them at the county building?
And if we have any crisis center around, we will refer them to the crisis center, which we, we have crisis center in other locations. I don't know specifically, as I said, you know, we need to get the community so we can find all the resources and we can help them to reach the, the resources they need.
So you don't know, basically, the answer, I guess. Okay, so, um. I think, I was trying to follow up with what had already been asked, so I think I covered. Questions. You get more questions.
Can I ask a quick question?
I don't know, man, I got lit.
Yeah, I will. You go ahead, look, go ahead, Charles. We'll keep, so we can keep things going. Go ahead, Charles.
You said there were thirty letters?
There are thirty letters were sent to, about thirty million were sent to.
Is there anybody in here to send a letter? I would just think that if someone sent a letter, they'd be down here. Talking for it. That's all I had.
Can I?
Okay.
Thank you. Well, I need to go back to Barbara. I interrupted. We'll come back to you. Go ahead, Barbara.
I have, and this is just one page in my notes on your application, okay, what I've been given. So I'm trying to get away from having to cover too much of this because a lot of my questions were covered in letters written by some of the residents of our city, who are residents, okay? We received a few letters last week with our packet. We are emailed and then. Today. Late in the day, not that long before the meeting, usually we have emails and letters come in before the actual meeting time. And I had to delay the meeting because I was just handed some of these letters right before the meeting started. A lot of. Information is in these letters that were written by members of our city, residents of our city. So what I'm going to do is I'm going to read these letters that were emailed from the residents, okay? Now, I also, in the, all the emails we got at the last minute. There was a letter in here from a council member of behavioral, the California Behavioral Science. Organization in Los Angeles, okay? I would submit that if you're not a resident of Needles, you wouldn't necessarily understand what Commissioner Wright just spoke about, about how much time and effort and money is going into a revision of the general plan. Which includes the downtown area, which is very important to everybody in the city, as far as I know. The residents that know what's going on. Part of this information is in these letters, so I'm going to be reading these letters into the record aloud for everybody in this room and everybody on the phone. I think it will. I think it will increase your understanding what this city is about and what that location is about, because in all of this information right here that is in your application and that I went through, of course, with fine to come, make notes on everything, is addressed, a lot of it's addressed in here, okay? And a lot of these very important facts were overlooked in the application, okay? They weren't considered at all. And then I have my own input, okay?
Well, do you have any other questions for him? And then maybe he can sit down as you read the letters. Okay.
Sure, any more questions?
While I'm reading the letters, while I may want you back, there's my right to call you back.
I'm ready to come back.
Yeah, go ahead. Thank you very much. Okay.
Okay, now I'm going to.
Just, just, then I interrupt you just a second. If, did you have a question for him before we go on with the letter?
Yes, just a quick.
So, go ahead. Sorry, Alexander.
I'm sorry about that. I appreciate you coming back up there. I don't know.
That way you'll have the information before you start the.
Any discussions or ask the question about what y'all are going to provide as far as security, because, you know, maybe if somebody gets out of hand, then maybe they're having some kind of mental health crisis or whatnot. Do you have any kind of security on hand if something, there's some kind of incident or anything like?
That's a very fair question. None of our other sites have ever had any secure, need for any security guards. Um, we haven't had any significant outbursts that we've had to call police, I think in any number of years, but if something were to happen, we would, we would call 911. Our staff do not go hands on.
Because I mean, unfortunately, I imagine you're dealing with people sometimes with mental problems and, or mental health issues and you know, sometimes somebody might be unstable or something. I don't know.
Okay, was that?
Uh, the Academy Awards.
Yeah. Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, Barbara, if you would read those letters quickly so we could get them in the record.
Quickly.
Quickly. There's a lot of them and we've got other people that want to speak, so.
April 6th, City of Needles Planning Commission and City Council. Regarding to the Pacific Clinic Service Center locating in downtown Needles. We don't object to the services for the homeless, but the facility definitely should be located, shouldn't, shouldn't, should not be located on Front Street. There are other locations that may, may or could be used for that purpose. The downtown area serves our community for events, tourism and railroad history. Santa Fe Park should be preserved for our future use, our future use. We have been in business here for thirty seven years and have supported our community in many ways. Please vote to preserve our history and tourism. Thank you. John and Melody Phillips, Wade and Brooke Phillips, Dylan and Jordan Phillips, Phillips Excavating. Next one. This is from Cindy Smith on Luna Vista. Needles homeless placement needles. Well, that's a misnomer right there, okay? I appreciate the opportunity to share my concerns over the possibility of a homeless shelter in the located, in located in the area of Santa Fe Park, El Garcia's area or downtown. And in my comments to the lady that wrote that lives and works in LA, I believe lives in LA, I'm not sure, um, I used to commute five and a half hours a day when I lived in Huntington Beach and worked in LA, okay? So I don't know where she lives, but, um, she sounds like she's gung ho on her job and I, I commend her for that. But there's a misunderstanding of what is here in this city. This is not Los Angeles, okay? Um, and as Mr. Daniels addressed us initially, this is not about whether we need the services or not. It's about where to put them, okay? Now, um, Ms. Smith, uh, is thinking about homeless and whether we should or shouldn't have the services, but I still want to read her letter because it has a lot of relevant facts in it. No one disputes the need for a facility. Location is a key factor in the acceptance of such a facility in our small, close knit community. As many local businesses, community groups and volunteers strive to keep the city clean and prosperous, this may be, this may very well be a negative launch in that direction. The downtown area is the ideal setting for community events, car, boat shows, markets, parades, picnics, weddings, rest stops, photo opportunities in the beautiful park and El Garcia's area for the many tourists visiting our community on their drive on Route 66. People may not wish to visit or stop in the downtown area upon noticing the homeless people wandering around or begging for assistance. Well, we know we're not talking about that necessarily, all being homeless. This will, they all live here, so they're actually by virtue of their application, if they're residing here, they're not homeless, okay? This will noticeably be a deterrent to tourists wanting to visit the local museum shops or walk around downtown. And I would venture to guess, part of my comments, which I can now eliminate, is I'm concerned about, um, using the park as their area, that's as if it belongs to them, okay? Which would deter anybody else coming in to use it if they were there. The school district utilizes the park and the El Garcia's for many school events and field trips that are attended by many students, staff and often San Bernardino County representatives. The use of the El Garcia's does, does provide income to the city of Needles for the rental use of the facility. This may be a drawback to the future of such events. Needles is supported with many areas that would be more of an ideal location for such a shelter and safe haven for the homeless. I would suggest a facility closer to the hospital, medical and social assistance offices and the Dollar General store for any needs within a closer walking distance. A facility located in this area should be more of a suitable location to serve the needs of the homeless population. Most importantly, your local businesses and community who have supported this community by living and paying taxes here for many years should be a top priority in any decision making by elected officials or the input of others who have not had a vested tie down to our, tied to our community. Next letter. From Juana Martinez Lopez. We are a small business restaurant located on Front Street in downtown Needles. Our business depends on locals and tourism. The purpose location of Pacific Clinic Service Center on Front Street is a concern for our business and the community. We are working together to promote our downtown, which is on the original Route 66 for tourists to travel. And that relates directed to, directly to what Commissioner Wright was talking about, okay? This huge investment of time and money to focus on the downtown area as related to tourism and other ways to earn money and also want people to come to our city. In Needles, there are other sites that would serve this need better. Our downtown Route 66 needs to be preserved. The El Garcia's Park and Museum for all to enjoy and visit. Please consider this in your vote. Regards. I named her already. Next letter. Memo. And I was, I had five minutes to read all this, so I skipped through them before the mini meeting really quickly. This, the Pacific Clinic Center is hope, is hoping to locate their facility on Front Street in downtown Needles. And this is from Georgia, Georgia, Bierbrialt. This would be located across the street from our crown jewel, the El Garcia's Hotel Train Station. It is also across from the Santa Fe Park where premier city events are held. This center will result in an influx of indigent people hanging around the El Garcia's and the park. Right now, without the outreach center located in the center of town, there are many problems with homeless in the park, setting fires in the El Garcia's, defecating and urinating in public places, spaces. This is a problem with the city of Needles, which would be exacerbated by having this service center, social club, located so close to this beautiful building and the center of town, also near the Chamber and Visitor Center. Would you really want the visitor center to be located in the midst of all this chaos that the homeless bring? Well, that might be a little dramatic, but we really can't say that for sure. There are many empty buildings in the town, some of which would be ideal for a service center such as this. I think that the center would be located, could be located in another part of town where, of town where the impact of tourism would be far less. Well, just about any area in town, the impact to tourism would be far less, except maybe Jack Smith Park itself. But that still doesn't even put, put a dent in it. The center will draw homeless who have nowhere to go but hang out near the center. That's what I'm concerned about. Please do not allow this organization to set up their facility at this location on Front Street. Encourage them to relocate away from the center of town. This is from Mike Thornton. Currently residing in Mojave Valley, I was a forty plus years resident of Needles. I am a board member of the Needles Regional Museum as well as a member of the Friends of the El Garcia's and the Needles Tourism Group. I am writing in opposition to citing the proposed homeless resource center on Front Street next to the museum. The groups I belong to have been marketing and promoting the downtown area, particularly the El Garcia's for some time now. And we are making progress in this area. The El Garcia's is a draw for tourism in our town. Its historic importance to Needles cannot be overstated. I led tours of the El Garcia's for any and all, I lead, for any and all that are interested. It is shameful that some of these tourists have to either step over the sleeping homeless or their trash or wait as they clear their belongings from a doorway that is needed. The opening of the homeless resource center from the El Garcia's would only add to this problem. Obviously, again, a misunderstanding about it not being a homeless center, but the consequences are very close. Personally, I am not unsympathetic to the plight of the homeless or the establishment of a resource center. I only oppose this location. This is from Judy Thornton. Honorable commissioners, I am the president of the Friends of the El Garcia's, Needles Tourism Board Member, Needles Museum Volunteer and Needles Rodeo Association Treasurer. As you can see, I am heavily involved in marketing and promoting tourism and visitor numbers in Needles. We have a large number of local volunteers and together over the past two years have been very successful in increasing and welcoming visitors to our area. We have also been instrumental in cleaning up the Santa Fe Park and protecting the El Garcia's so that visitors will stop and explore our historic downtown. By the way, as an aside, I asked the city to do something for me many months ago and tell me how much money went into rep, to restoration of the El Garcia's so far. It's over nine million dollars, okay? A lot of that or all of it, I don't know. I think it was mostly grants, but I think the city had, had to have participated somehow. But that's a nine million dollar partial restoration. It is therefore counterproductive, and that is, um, federal money, okay? I believe, um, part of it might be county or state, but I'm not sure. Mr. Daniels would know that. It is therefore counterproductive to approve a homeless service center in the middle of Route 66 Front Street in our downtown area. Many of our visitors come upon the museum and El Garcia's while driving Route 66 and will not stop with a large homeless presence around the park. Needles has a population of about five thousand people. The population has stayed constant and the demographics are not going to change. So we are reliant on the tourism industry for revenue, much like Williams. Our dent, that's Williams, Arizona. That's like the entrance to the Grand Canyon. Our downtown area has to be welcoming, inviting and safe so that visitors will stop. Okay, now, I believe it was the Business Association that put up this, the, the rock plaque that is on corner at an angle, maybe.
The Route 66 sign?
Yes.
Yes.
Well, is that, it, it's a work of art. It's not just a sign, okay? I believe Janet, you could answer that. Did, did the Business Association put that up? That, that was something to attract tourists and beautify that center. It cost a lot of money, okay? And it was gorgeous when it went in. We all just loved it. So we love the attraction of the park. We try and attract people there. We're not attracting people, people sleeping on the ground with trash, okay? Or anything else that might come with a, a social club. Our goal is to make Needles a destination and working together, we can make that happen. Please protect the future of Needles by protecting it now. That was Judy Thornton. The last in this pile, it was handed to us a few minutes before the meeting started. Steve Neverov. Hi Janet, I think. Yeah, Jernigan, this was addressed to. Hi Janet, I think that this is an absolutely absurd idea. If I'm not mistaken, Steve Neverov runs, manages the electric, the green electric company right before the bridge, okay? This is, so another businessman, okay? That is the main artery of downtown Needles, California. There are much better locations, not just nestled in downtown. Please let me know what else I can do to object. Okay, I think that's all in this pile. Now, there are only a couple more that, these were mostly, most of this is provided to us last week, okay? Not right before the meeting this afternoon, okay? Um, hi Patrick. This email is in office and this is from Janet Jernigan. This email is in opposition to the clubhouse funded by Pacific Clinic. By George Soros Group. Location is on Front Street across from the jewel of the desert, El Garcia's. We already have complaints from citizens that inquire about renting the El Garcia's and have to deal with the homeless. Ms. Ms. Jernigan is in charge of renting the spaces over there. Yes?
Yeah, go on.
I misunderstood you. You said, what kind of group? You said, what kind of group?
Remember.
Funded by, okay? The clubhouse funded by Pacific Clinic. Okay, so there's a found, there's, there's a political issue here about bringing in socialism and, you know, where's the money coming from and why is it coming here and what, why do we need you here? Is there really a need?
I think, just go through the letters so that, and then, yeah, and, and we can have comment. That's okay.
Don't raise your hand again. I'll probably call on you and she'll get mad at me. Um, and you'll be out of order and so will I. Um, the, okay, the high school wouldn't hold their dance there this year because of what we already have for a problem. This is our downtown, the center of Needles, and now will be taken over by more homeless. The city has obviously approved. Counselor Ellen Campbell, who is with us right now, was down touring it and feeling how, saying how wonderful it was. And Jan is saying, this should be a different location. Has the city any consideration what it will do for tourism, driving by and seeing the hang for the homeless? Why stop? This is from Judy Thornton. It is, um, I think pretty much the same.
It's the same one.
And then this one is from Lynn Parker. This is in your favor, okay? I had to read them all. I was going to read one. I am Lynn Parker, a private citizen in Needles, a resident for fifty years. I am writing to you with an opinion that is mine. I am not representing, she works for the chamber, any agency or any entity or, or business, or, or any business. I am speaking solely from my person, own personal point of view and beliefs. The homeless problem in Needles is becoming critical. Again, misunderstanding, this is not about that. I believe it is the responsibility of the local jurisdictions to provide solutions and services for those marginalized. And then she says profit. I don't understand that word being in here, but I'll go on. I urge the commission to keep the door open to providing services regardless of location. That I agree with, okay? If, if you have ascertained, although I still have no facts, I still have not seen anywhere in any of this information where any of our residents fit the bill here or social services paying for whatever. You have a pool table in there and you have a kitchen that's table that seats ten and three showers. Um, Kippy Paulson. Now, this is one, I got this one last week. I, and she's a longtime resident. She probably was even born here. I'm not sure, okay? She has, she was, okay, and she had. What?
Said it's irrelevant. Just read the letter.
I, please don't interrupt me again, okay? I have a personality that sometimes includes a little sense of humor along the way. All Planning Commission member and City Council members. I'm writing this note to register my opinion regarding the proposed establishment of Pacific Clinic Services Center next to the Needles Regional Museum. While I feel Needles needs this type of establishment, I think it would be better served at a different location. City staff and city citizens of Needles have worked hard to upgrade our downtown area and make it an area to be enjoyed while attending community events in the park, using the El Garcia's for functions, the establishment of our new Chamber of Commerce office, et cetera. When, when the, when you locate a service of this type encouraging people that need this service, the city will be opening up a lot of foot traffic by people that will attempt to spend many hours in our park and eventually cause wear and tear to the area. This would not be something that would encourage groups to have citywide functions. Okay, so that is a well stated letter and she has an understanding of what you're doing, trying to do. This letter is from, I don't know if this is identical. I got one on the phone at the last minute, which I have.
So from?
I have addressed. This is from Kristen Munkow, California Mental Health Services out of Los Angeles, according to the area code. And I, she was on the phone earlier. I don't, yeah, she's still there. So she's not, I don't believe on one of the pictures, okay? Um, this letter is in support of the clubhouse, okay? So again, we have, I, I have to defer here because this is an issue with me as it was before with two others. There is a legal reason that we have to have required them to start calling it a social club instead of a clubhouse. I'm still not clear on that because made them change and their application was for a clubhouse. So someplace in our permitted uses, it had to be called the social club. And so I am concerned with that and based on, you know, I'm not going to say anymore about that. This letter is in support of the clubhouse and the letter I got at the last minute here, kind of, um, that I addressed an answer to her about, uh, concerned me that she kept calling it a clubhouse coming out of Los Angeles. So we, I would want to see what LA calls a clubhouse by definition, since that's where this company, company is coming from. Um, clubhouses are organizations that operate on proven standards developed over five decades by Clubhouse International and effective in over three and effective in over 320 clubhouses worldwide. Clubhouses are located in business centers, places of commerce and even shopping malls. The presence of a clubhouse does not negatively impact a local area and has in fact been found to improve the relationship and respect with which individuals in need interact within their, with their community. Well, we, okay, I'll just move on. Work, I could disagree with most of what she's saying here. Work, education and social activities in the clubhouse are meaningful and help members regain self-worth, confidence and purpose. A recent study suggests that service systems like clubhouses that offer ongoing social supports enhance mental and physical health by reducing disconnectedness. This reduction in disconnectedness is what allows participants to engage in their community as a contributing member. In addition, clubhouse participation has been shown to lead to reduced incarcerations with criminal, we don't incarcerate anybody here. We don't have the time even to release them. We just move on. With criminal justice system involvement substantially diminished during and after clubhouse psycho, psychosocial program membership. Psycho social. Don't like that word. Studies, there's footnote that goes to some study. Studies regarding hospitalization find the clubhouse participants see a significant decrease in hospitalizations as a result of membership in a clubhouse program. These outcomes greatly reduce pressures on local resources. While these studies, local resources, it's not up to local resources to pay for this. You pay for everything. So that's not an issue either. While these studies have been published and validated, what hasn't been validated are claims that clubhouses attract transient individuals, create a safety concern for surrounding. Well, see, the burden is on you to say that that's not going to happen. Okay? You can't say that. She's trying to say it's on us to prove why we're objecting. It's not, okay? I'm not objecting. I get to vote because I'm a planning commissioner. It's everybody here that is voicing objections by their appearance or by standing up here and talking, just by being here, by writing letters. Okay? It's, she's trying to put it on us to prove how we think, why we think the way we do. It's not up to us. These statements are all spoken from a place of unfounded stigma and lack of understanding of the program. Well, we understand our city and we understand the downtown area. All of us have a very clear understanding of that. Making a decision to restrict programming, we're not saying that if we don't vote for this, we're not saying anything about the programming. The programming is very minimal. Okay, it's a place for them to hang out and it's got a pool table and a kitchen. So we're not, she's saying we're making a decision to restrict programming. That hasn't even come up due to these unsubstantiated claims. Okay, well, she doesn't live here. Would reinforce that the Planning Commission agrees with the false stigma surrounding services that benefit the behavioral health of their own community. So far, I don't know of anybody from here that's applied for this. Maybe they're not in the packet. I would ask you to please support the establishment of the clubhouse at the proposed location and bring this proven and highly requested resource to the community of Needles. Again, Susan Solomon. I am strongly in favor of Needles supporting the clinic to provide services to our disabled, handicapped and ill residents. This is important. Providing the services, nothing about the location. Okay, I think I got them all. Now, I touched on my objections, but I think that's all of them all. So if you give me three minutes, you can.
I'll give you three minutes and then we have a lot of public comment that we need to get to soon.
Oh, okay.
Would you like me to start with public comment?
Yeah, I've got to.
Any other public comment? State your name and address, please.
Hi, I'm Jan Jernigan, 2068 Cardi Way, Needles. I'm the kid, commissioners and city manager. I'm also a business person downtown Needles and I have first bird's eye view, I would say, of El Garces and the park. I'm also here to speak on my concern of tourism. You know, when, so your vote on the agenda item before you is one that will impact our downtown Route 66. In the past several years, we have had increased destruction and general lack of respect for the El Garces in Santa Fe Park. To highlight this, a $55,000 fountain sits empty and will never have water in it again. And will not see water. Amtrak room is closed. A transient from Fresno set fire to the men's restroom and a variety of acts of vandalism have occurred. On TV, we see what is happening across the United States, especially in California. And it is here, camping in the park, drug use and sex in the grass in the open. We are working to control this before we do lose the park. This location is not suited for our downtown. At the same time, we're working on marketing Needles, the tourism Route 66. We have worked as for Needles as a destination. Last month at the general plan meeting for the downtown, Williams, Arizona was listed as a city comparable to us. They are after tourism and that is what our direction is for Needles. We have it all, the river, water sports, desert off-road, gateway to California and law for Nevada. You can't forget the gambling. February, the California Historic Route 66 Association hosted an information fair at El Garces. We had 18 vendors, 14 from far away, Colorado, Arizona, New Mexico and Illinois. 300 visitors from 10 o'clock to 2 o'clock enjoyed our downtown and 80 on the tour of El Garces. Out of this, we will be hosting the information fair next year and making plans for the 100th anniversary of Route 66 in 2026. The El Garces has been selected as the starting and finish for the East Mojave Trail Tour of East Mojave Desert. This is destined to be the premier route over trail in the United States covering 733 miles. Ragged wheel and finished resorts, so we're really fortunate that other businesses are included, will be the checkpoints for this. This will start in October and it is approved by BLN, the National Park Service. It's, it's figured to be about a seven, six to seven day trip. Not for the faint of heart. The rentals for El Garces from January to present, we have had 970 people come into El Garces for events. Last week, we had 370 people attending events. 50% of that count was from out of the area. The second annual, I just have one more statement. The second annual Needles segment, my run is April 7th through May 1st. And we will be hosting that event here for Needles. We will also be having a hosting a day in the park, April 29th. The museum on Front Street has also increased visitors and the addition of Spike is helping. Tourism is important to our city and that's why it is imperative to keep our downtown as it is for all to enjoy. Thank you.
Thanks, Jan.
I have one more and then I think I can shut up.
Go ahead.
Yeah, probably the one issue that was most important to me. I'm going to speak on one more item and then you probably won't hear from me except for my vote. I'm concerned about the children. Okay? All these activities that have been listed by the residents in their letters, most of them, I think all of them, center around activities that we have for children in the downtown area, right smack in front of where you want to put this, this clubhouse, this social club. Okay? It, they involve the park, they involve the vacant lot where we hope to get some development at a future date. They involve Broadway, all those little side streets, they involve Front Street, people lining up to be in parades. They involve Third Street, every, that whole area is full of children for parades, for all kinds of activities. Okay? So I have a major concern about the risk, about their safety. Okay? These people have mental health issues for a reason. Okay, they may have had horrible things happen to them in the past. They may just have other medical issues. We don't know. Okay? But they have issues. Those issues are going to be demonstrable and the children can see them just by looking at them. If they have major issues that are demonstrable, they're going, that's going to be in their faces. Every single day they go down there for any of the activities the city, the city plans for our children. So that is probably the most important reason I'm concerned about this location. I be out of LA, okay? And I watch YouTube videos about the crime down there and other places. Okay? And I see what the problem is and I see the damage that's done. So I'm concerned about them.
Hey, sir, would you come up and state your name and address, please?
Yes.
Thank you.
My name is Greg Crafton. I live at 364 River View Terrace. And I found about this yesterday. I've been out of town, so I hope my lack of preparation overcome where the sincerity of what I'm saying. I've been here long enough, almost 40 years. What I remember a viable option was giving the keys to the city, to the county. And whatever our history was, would fade and whatever we would be as a city, Needles would be gone. I watched two previous partnerships in El Garces, though they all conceived, they pushed the ball a little bit further. And finally, El Garces and Wrecking Ball were never used in the same sentence. It is our crown jewel down there. There, it's a little commercial building to the south or southeast, if you will. It was either on the market or will be in the next few days. If this goes through, it'll be devalued by 20%. I have no financial interest in anything in this entire area, except the interest we all share in the community. This is not an appropriate location for this project. Alejandro and his group should be commended for what they're trying to do. And we probably as a community should see what resources we could help them. But it's not El Garces Park, it's not here. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comments? Step up, please.
My name is Pam Clem, 4602 Star Road, Fort Mojave, Arizona. For 25 years, I have worked on F Street and on Front Street for 25 years. 21 of those was at a beauty salon, desert hair design, looked straight out onto the park, onto Front Street. 11 of those 25 years, I have volunteered at the museum. I am a volunteer, I'm also the vice president of the museum. I have to tell you in 25 years, I could write a book on everything I've seen in that museum. And I understand he's saying that it's not going to be a place for homeless people. It's for people with mental issues. But the people in the park that I see, they have mental issues. I've seen fights, I've seen men hit women, I've seen young people hit old people. I've seen people doing a lot of other things in that park. You're going to add people with mental issues, with people who are homeless who have mental issues. I don't think it's a good mix for downtown. I don't think, I don't think it's a good mix next to the museum. I'm going to be 74 years old this year. I work by myself many, many, many days at the museum. We have some people homeless that come in. We have a gentleman who comes in who's a local. He makes me very uncomfortable. Am I going to be comfortable knowing that there are people next door who have mental issues? I don't think so. I don't have the wherewithal, I'm not 50, I'm not 60 years old, that I can deal with all this. I don't think that this is the place. I think they, I think it's a wonderful thing they want to do. I think it's good, but it needs to be not on Front Street. Thank you.
Thank you. Sir?
My name is David. I'm actually out of Los Angeles. Some of you might already know or not. I'm the owner of the property that the Pacific Clinics is trying to get into. I also agree with all of the residents, whatever they said, as far as, I have no, no, however you call it, as far as there will be conflict interest, that's not where I'm pushing them to be in the building. But I, some of you might know, I own several commercial properties in town. I own them for over 25 to 25 years, give or take, and keep adding to the portfolio. I also had over 30, 40 residential properties that I got rid of that no longer I want to have in the city, to be honest with you. So I am an investor in the, in the city outside of, from Los Angeles. My company owns properties throughout Los Angeles, Phoenix, Utah, Albuquerque, Las Vegas. So we have multiple properties and I'm very familiar with the overall city of Needles. So as far as the location wise, as I agree with majority of the, majority of the residents right now, it's where, I guess it's not a good fit. That's, again, I just wanted to let you guys know that I'm the property owner. Majority of what it was said about the property as far as showers, this and that, it was inaccurate. Also, how I came across with the Pacific Clinics. They were introduced to me from the city with their agent because they've been trying to get a place. And because of their budget, they were not able to get a location. I'm not very familiar with the, with the exact business that they're doing. Again, I tried to show them multiple of the properties that I owned, but it just did not work out with them. Also to add, Pacific Clinics was taken inside of the El Garces by the rental commission that whoever is doing the rental of the El Garces showed the place after knowing what the business was. And then after that, they were taken down with a contractor to give the bids of what it will take to put in showers inside of the El Garces. And at that time is where cutting the concrete of the El Garces was so expensive, they were out of budget. And in fact, I'm, for me, it has nothing to do with what location they're going to be in, to be honest with you. I'm not doing it for the money or the rentals. Some of you might know I have over 10 properties that are vacant. Majority of them, some of them are in the tourist area that you guys are talking about. Never, ever, ever, in the past 15 years, nobody has ever approached me to rent any of those locations, even at the minimum amount. Doesn't matter. Again, it's not about the rental that I'm going to get from Pacific Clinics because they had a very small budget. I was in favor of the whole entire, what they're doing to introduce to the city. Now, we tried, personally myself, I tried multiple of the other buildings that were on Bailey to even purchase the building to rent it out to them. And, and again, majority of the owners, at least two of the owners on Bailey, did not want to sell at the, at even close to even a market value. Because of the cultivation stuff that's going on and everybody thinks that they could do cultivation in every single building in town. So the value is they're thinking, oh, my building, 1,000, 5,000 square feet is $7 million. So this is not Los Angeles, I'll tell you that. But I even tried to purchase those buildings to rent them out. I own the clinic building, I own the 1600 Bailey, which I got the behavioral health in there. 1402 Bailey as well, when the city was struggling, was shutting down the hospital because there was no support of a clinic. That's when I bought in the clinic to collaborate with the hospital so they could get the, as far as healthcare going in the city. I, so it's where we tried to get other properties for them. And also all the renovation has been done out of pocket because the nonprofit does not have the funding for that particular business. So as far as the way I hear it is, the negative is where, again, majority of you are in favor of the business, but not the location, which I, I, now that I participate somewhat, agree to what, some extent. But I also, if any of you have any locations that you could help them out, mention it. Because nobody wants to lease them out anything.
Yeah.
So it's where, if, if somebody wants, I would, I would highly recommend any type of business to come to Needles. Any type of business is actually an improvement for city of Needles. But if a building owner has a building that is worth 300,000 at max, is asking $4 million because they think they could grow pot in there, doesn't, it's just any other business cannot compete with that. So it's, again, all the renovation has been out of pocket where even if I lease them out for five years, which their lease is only for one year to see, because county is only approving one year at a time. It's where in the next five years, I wouldn't even get them half the money of the renovation.
For you, you, you say there's no showers in there, but there's showers.
I never said there's no showers in there. There was mentions of three showers, so there is a shower. We were putting the shower, they were putting, entered the shower. That was the mention without. We put in the shower, they put entered the shower, that was the mention without the permit.
Is on our plan.
Yeah, there, there is a shower in the proper, there's one ADA approved shower and what, there is no three showers.
Two ADA and one negative.
No, man. Uh, I have to be more than happy to take a tour over there. I was the one renovating the building myself with the crew. And it, it, as far as a couple of the violations, all as well is because we could not pull the permit. It was exactly during COVID, the city was closed. After the fact of city opening, we went in to get permits, uh, arranged. And again, uh, again, I have no problem of doing any type of changes to the building whatsoever. I just in favor of the business coming into town as majority of you are. Uh, but if it's not for that location, if you guys could route them in any direction of where to work out the situation. Or I, my opinion is to give them some sort of an approval for temporary licensing or something like that. Where if it creates a problem in X amount of time, then either they're out of there. Because the way it looks, they're not gonna, then they, they don't have the funding to stick around. So if it gets denied.
I have to, we're way over the three minutes, but I appreciate you, um, coming up and explaining that. And I hope you continue to work with them, that's great.
Uh, I try if, if there are any buildings and there is the building on the market, as you, as one of the residents said. Uh, I mean, also negotiation, but that falls exactly on the corner of that property as well, so it wouldn't make any sense.
Okay, thank you very much. Any other public comment?
Pat Murch, two zero two four Peru Street. Location, 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 that's been said tonight. You know what I do for a living, mental health is a problem. The behavioral health center on the, uh, at the end of the street down here is very good. However, it's not a walk-in center. So one of the things you need to take into consideration when one of these places opens up is how's it gonna affect us? Because when they call for fifty-one fifty, that means someone near law enforcement department is probably gonna be doing the transport for them to San Bernardino. Cause they don't take Watkins at a fourteen oh one or sixteen hundred. So that's something you take into consideration. Um, point and time count, I was involved in with that this year. Most of our contacts were in the park. And point and time count is where we count transits in your community. And the vast majority were in the park or around the liquor stores. So they're there, some of them want to be there, they don't want any assistance from anybody. And they do have their ticks is a good way of putting it without saying that, you know. So when you have someone come into town, make sure that when they provide this, if, that they have someone actually in the office just to help them to hone their skills or something. That's not what we need, we actually need someone that can help someone with the mental health issue. And I would ask the county to take those funds possibly from a program like this and expand the program they have to make that clinic an open facility where people could come in all the time. And not on Wednesday to make an appointment to be seen the following week.
One on Bailey?
Yes, because what happens is when that happens, you have to take someone from here to drive somebody to San Bernardino to drop them off. And it's usually eight to ten hours minimum that they're gone.
Well, Sheriff's Department is getting paid five and a half for driving?
No, you get paid.
They take one, they're taking officer off the street.
Off the street. So I'm just saying, you need to really be thinking about this, it's definitely needed. Okay, there's, there's definitely a lot of mental illness problems within the community. But location in this particular case is one of the reasons I would object to it. And the other part is what happens when someone comes in that does have a mental issue that they can't control, they're gonna call us. They're not gonna call behavioral health because behavioral health doesn't take them. Cause they have to make an appointment and the only time you can make an appointment is on Wednesday. To be seen the following week, I know it makes no sense, I've been doing this twenty-four years in this town. So we have an issue with it. And if they can come and do some good, great, but stick to your location, okay? Thank you.
Thank you.
Can you elaborate, you said something about fifty-one fifty, what, what does that mean?
When somebody has.
They have to transport them.
Can't care for themselves, that's considered fifty-one fifty, well for an institution, institution code fifty-one fifty. Okay, those people are through behavioral health. County entered into a contract that was supposed to help everybody with the, with the, with the organization called C C R T. Where they come help with transports, they don't service needles. Too far away from San Bernardino.
Oh, they only keep them for two or three days, right?
That's not up to us, it's up to the doctor.
I think there's a legal limit on.
So what I'm saying is, is you're gonna be taking somebody off the street to drive someone to San Bernardino to handle this. But also, you're gonna have more, you're gonna have more people come to town because we deal with a tremendous amount of people that come in off the train or whatever. And they come to California because where they get more than any other state, SSI and benefits. And they'll tell you that. So we get a lot of people coming from the east, the first stop they get to is here because they want benefits. We have social security building here, we have county health services, uh, EPS, DPS and all that that help out with stuff like that. So you're, you're gonna tax your resources to death if you're not careful, okay? And I would be going to the county and asking them to take that current facility that they have and expanding what their role is and what they can do at that facility. Is what I would be asking them to do, to help out your mental people in town who have mental illness problems. Thank you.
Thank you, Pam.
Thank you.
Any other public comment?
My name is Kathy McConnell, nine zero nine beach, in Needles. Um, okay, I've sat and watched all of this and I've heard the stuff before the meeting and now I've heard it all. If you commissioners have not heard enough to have red flags going up, something's been missing here. Uh, my family's been here since in the thirties. My father-in-law was the mayor here in fifty-one. My husband and I both graduated here in the sixties. We've been here a long time and there's at least two or three other families that are represented here tonight that between all of us, we have well over a hundred years of watching this town. We have seen things go on here because we're this little hickey town out here in the middle of the desert. And we're so dumb out here, we don't know what's going on. Now, we've been taken before, we've been nearly bankrupted many times. If you're not getting red flags here, I'm sorry, something's wrong. Put up your antennas. As for one comment that was made by the gentleman that is, um, representing, uh, Pacific. Your organization is not gonna be what our town is built around. We're gonna be here a long time after he's gone, we've been here a long time before he's here. That El Garcia's has been here for over a hundred years. That JCPenney building right next to hit this facility, if it's put in, has been here for well over seventy years. The museum has been there. Now, what I'm gonna say, I don't mean to insult anybody. And I know the owner has other things. The fact that he went in and he made this place desirable for the Pacific people, that's on him. He was not approved, that was his thing. There's other places in town, but because he's made it easy for them, now it's the only place in town. That's not true. That's on him. If he lost money, I'm sorry. We cannot be allowing this type of thing in our tourist area. You let it go in, you're done. It's happened, doesn't matter what happens in a year, some kind of a little lease, short time lease. If you let it go in, it's done. So think about it hard, go back in your records for the ones of you that are new here, because I know many of you are new here, fairly new here. If you don't have about seventy or eighty years, you're a newbie in Needles. You've been here a long time, but you haven't seen the amount of times Needles has been ripped off by people that came in saying, we're gonna be wonderful for your town. So be careful. And I know a lot of you and I know you're smart and I have confidence in you and then I have confidence in our council. Thanks.
Thank you. Any other public comment? Uh, you've already spoken. Okay, anyone else? Just state your name and address, please.
Patrick McCorville, two oh five Fairway Drive, Needles. Uh, just a quick question, who financed the upgrades to the building? Okay, so you just, you just personally, okay, it wasn't different. But I, I just. No, 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 that's fine, I, I just.
Even more than willing to do it on a different building.
No, 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 that's fine, I was just trying to get clarification with all of this stuff that's going on. No, that's, that's fine, I was just trying to get clarification.
Even three minutes.
No, uh, you know, it sounds like from, from what I've heard from letters and councilman person, the people that are talking, it's, we can all agree it's not the right location for this, but it is something that is needed. You know, um, if something can be closer to the Bailey addresses where I think it'll clear, uh, everybody's minds that it's near more medical facilities. The sheriff's department is a couple hundred yards away if anything goes down. Um, if the, uh, commission decides to deny this today and Pacific Clinics wants to proceed at another location. My suggestion to the city is reach out to other places that have this type of program and ask them the pros and cons after the fact that they allow this command. What did they enjoy about it, what did they, what would they change? Were the pros and cons, like I said, if Pacific Clinics decides to do it at a different location. Um, my view is it, it needs to be at a different location and not in our tourist area. But it's something that's needed and hopefully everybody can find a compromise somewhere.
Thank you. Okay, any other public comment?
One short.
Three minutes.
From, uh, two oh six eight Cardiway, I've been in the council, been in your guys' positions before, been here forty-five years. My only, my only advice is beware of governments outside of the city of Needles who want to do us a favor.
Thank you. Okay, any other public comment? If not, we'll, uh, close the public comment and close the public hearing. Is there other questions by the commission or discussion? I, I have a question for you, Alexandra. Uh, had you, have you contacted, well, you, you deal with this, uh, behavioral health? Are there rooms available up there that you could work with them and at least start a small clinic or an outreach program there?
As. Not aware as to how much available space they have.
Cause I know there was a doctor's office in there and he's no longer there, so I think there's at least two rooms that would be open. And then you're right, you know, close to the public health or the, um, behavioral health. And also our, our public health county clinic is just down the street. And that does seem to be a really, you know, I can't tell you where to put your business. But I'm, I'm giving you suggestions and maybe check with San Bernardino.
Yeah, I appreciate the recommendations.
You know, and, uh, so that might be an option too to get you started, I don't know. But, okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions or discussions?
In, in view of what you just said, Madam Chair, on the plans, first of all, I need to stand corrected. I couldn't read them, but it looked like three bathrooms, there is an ADA and a shower. And then it looks like another shower with a bed and possibly bathroom, facility, I can't tell because they're so tiny. It looked like three showers, okay? It's, the original plan, I think, showed two showers and this thing, I can't read, it's so small. And then it showed that ADA shower, shower to be converted to storage. I just saw that, okay? So I stand corrected that there are three showers in there, alright? Now, in light of what Madam Chair just said, um, most of this was all office space on the current plan. So all you have is a pool table, a library and a kitchen. And there was some, uh, explanation about trying to train people how to cook. I probably want to enroll in that, I'm not sure. But, um, so the kitchen space looked like it could hold more people, there's tables for ten people, but just for the diagram, I guess. So, um, you can, you can find pool tables, I would assume someplace. All you, all you're looking at, they're not gonna sleep there, apparently they're not gonna shower there because there's only one shower, one ADA and one regular. Now the one shower has been eliminated, so we're down to one shower and pool table and you can eat and TV. I think that's all that's left, okay? So I would think with that amount of facilities, you could easily put, most of, all the rest of it's all offices, okay? So I would think you could easily put that in another building, the actual key things that you're offering to people that want these services.
Okay, so for myself moving forward, because the city's asking us for recommendations on what to do. Myself, I think you've got a great service, it is well needed here, there's no question, mental health is on the rise. Um, and as Pat Murch mentioned, our behavioral clinic doesn't fit the bill for what we need in the city, in my opinion, either. It's very limited resources and I think it'd be great for you to work with the county. And maybe work with them to bring more of those types of services here. You know, I, we can't compare it to an LA clubhouse and putting in the strip mall, anything like that. We're a very different community. And I have to say, if you had come in and worked with the community, we have a lot of services in town. The, the Set Free, the, um, Firestorm Ministries, Saint Vincent's. And really, if you would collaborate with them, and I mean, we're looking at a general plan and I look at maybe a bigger plan. Maybe there's something that all of you can get together with and either build or buy a big facility and have it all in one area. You know, but I think it's gonna take some brainstorming and obviously money. But I think a lot of those things can be done with private money too, rather than county money is our money, I mean, that's taxpayer money. So, you know, we want source, resources brought to Needles that will benefit our community. We do have mental health issues here and we, they should have better service. So I totally agree on that. And I commend you for what you're doing, I just don't like the location. So. Any other comments?
Yeah, we're supposed to make a, there's a resolution to it.
Mm-hmm.
Well, on that, Madam Chair, in, in response to the question. The resolution that is in your packet was if, that based on the findings that they submitted, City Clinics submitted.
Mm-hmm.
If you were going to accept those findings, this resolution would work.
Correct.
If you are not, then we would request that you provide direction to us, bring back the resolution that reflects the direction of the commission.
I have a comment to make about the findings.
Will you finish, Rick? Okay, yeah, go ahead.
He was waiting for an opening there. We're waiting for an opening, we're looking at the organization.
You just pause.
You don't want to do that with me. Um, so I cannot make the findings as, uh, it says, according to section ninety-four point oh seven, planning commission must make the following findings for special use term. Number one is within the jurisdiction permissible uses. While I'm not getting into that one yet until I know for sure, I'm a little surprised to say about that. The application is complete, don't know that either, that's up to staff, we're not getting a recommendation as to whether it is or isn't. So I'm gonna assume hypothetically it is. The use will not materially endanger the public health or safety, I cannot make that finding. Number four, the use will not substantially hinder the value of adjoining or abutting properties, I can't make that finding. The use, and number five, the use will be in harmony, this is the major one to me, in harmony with the area in which it is to be located. Absolutely not, cannot make that finding. Number six, the development is in general conformity with the Needles general plan. I can't make that finding either because we're right in limbo about the downtown area and we're just in the middle of redoing all of it. And it's caused time, years and money to get to this point right now. So I can't even, I don't, I can't make the finding in number six either.
Okay.
So I'd like to make the motion, like to move that we, um, decline the current, um, application at its, at its location. And that, um, for the reasons that, um, the spirit just described. I think if it, if we're to come back, came back at a different location, that we could revisit this. But I think that the findings are inadequate and do not meet, um, the criteria in mind. So. Motion then is to decline this, this application. Motion then is to decline this, this application and revisit it in the event that another address is found and that uh, that meets the criteria.
I'll second that.
I think that should cover it. Do you have a second? Okay.
So, Madam Chair, you're giving us the direction, we're gonna come back with those findings, drop it up in a resolution at the next meeting, so you guys can vote on that resolution. Yes.
In a different location.
Yes, okay. Just in general, this, this location, we're gonna drop with those findings based on the testimony and the board's perspective on what you're gonna vote on right now, and we're gonna bring back that resolution with the findings based on the comments and public um, comments that were provided today. So, that would.
Yeah, yes.
Vote would, would make that happen, yes.
A yes vote would be for the new resolution, I mean, for the, yeah, for the change.
I have another issue to tag on to this, if it's appropriate, if you think it's appropriate. I'm not satisfied that we have a need for this facility, okay? That, that, that we have a need in Needles right now for a standalone social club. I believe we may have a need for something that might be housed in with existing county facilities, but we have not seen the thirty letters, we have not seen the forty-five applications, they could be redacted so that we could actually see that we have residents here in Needles, okay? Right now, that's all I'm concerned about is our people, okay? Not shipping them in by bus at our cost from other cities. So, do we have to, do we even need this facility right now? And I haven't seen anything in the packet that indicates that we do. Okay, so if, and when you come back to us, can we amend the motion to say and come back with us with statistics on the need for even doing this?
Well, I guess we're still in the discussion phase because my, my point of this too is, I'm not sure that this, there's a, a fit for this type of service here as the recovery. I think there's a fit for the mental health, more direct services. Because you look at, just like Pat Murch says, what they're taking, they're gonna use our services, and we have to look out for our business community, the people that live here in that they're using our services that our taxpayers aren't paying for, you know? It's not Pacific Health money, it's taxpayer services, and that takes those people out of our community. I, I don't doubt that we have people here, but I don't know that it's that type of service that we need. And regardless if it's downtown or if it's up on the hill, i- if they don't have the mental health facility up there that can actually help the people that are in crisis or need more um, care, I, I'm not sure wherever it's located that that would actually give us the services we need. Again, I'm not saying it isn't a great service, we're not in a big community. We can't reach out to an extra police officer, we're, you know, another hospital bed or, you know, we're very limited here. And we do have a lot of services that, you know, like, like I said, Saint Vincent's, people that help out the needy and things like that, but I'm not sure that we have the need for a clubhouse or some facility that they can just, you know, kinda hang out in. So.
So, I would have a question for Mr. Dennis.
Yes.
Why do you need to come, why do you need direction if we just don't make a motion? If we don't, if the motion fails, why do you need more?
Um, because, uh, Madam Chair.
Yes, go ahead.
Cause I would like to beep up with specific data, those findings. So, it's not just the conclusionary statement that it's not compatible, but we would elaborate on that sentence, use that as the opening sentence of a paragraph that would have two or three specifics.
But is that up to us to do? Isn't it up to them to come in with a application for something that we're wanting to approve?
Madam Chair, what I'm trying to do is to legally strengthen the action that you're contemplating.
But like Chairman Kidd stated, it's up to them to strengthen their own application.
No, I don't know, I'm, I'm talking about the, the new resolution for denial, for denying.
If we don't bring a motion at all, or if the motion.
Wouldn't have a resolution. If I, if I make a mo.
I don't think that provides a.
It has to have a legal definition for what our denial is.
It doesn't.
No, we just do, we did for the findings.
Any findings?
I just stated my findings, okay?
I know.
And if you can, the motion includes my findings, what I stated. That's what he stated.
And Madam Chair, what I'm asking for is the opportunity to come back with an elaboration with facts that we gleaned from the testimony and comments you guys made to make those statements paragraphs. And I think that will legally strengthen any defense.
To summarize, to, on the findings, which are typically findings for,
Yeah.
you need to be able to elaborate the findings against, or the findings in opposition to that.
The findings in favor of this.
Opposition, in opposition.
Of this motion.
It's the same thing we did on something recently.
Yeah, it's on the opposition.
We needed more elaboration on the findings, in order, the gentleman that was finding, the case.
Bill, are you getting this?
So that we have clarity in the findings, but on planning mission level, instead of city council. Well, they have to have.
So, so he can make his motion, well, like he did, based on the findings, but to come back to elaborate more on that.
So, the motion has to include what I said about the findings specifically, so you're clear on that.
He did say that.
He did say that.
And then, and then you, you're, you're directing me, or what I'm hearing, what to do, is go elaborate on those. For example, one of them was safety and security or something like that. Well, you heard testimony tonight that people felt, will feel uncomfortable. We will, we will use that.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second, and so I'll ask for, Kevin seconded, yes. So, I'll ask for the vote then. You wanna, do you wanna call, uh, do an oral vote?
Yes, that would be lovely, we're waiting. Commissioner Wright.
Aye.
Commissioner Beer.
Yes.
Commissioner Raff.
Aye.
Chair Kidd.
Yes.
Commissioner Ospey.
Yes. Aye.
Ospey was an aye and we lost Dressler.
Madam Chair, I, I wanna clarify.
Is he still here?
Yeah.
That, that this is a denial without prejudice in the sense that.
Yeah.
At a different location, you give it due consideration.
Absolutely.
Right, that's what I thought.
Everybody here will still be here the next time if you don't like it. Okay, so, got it, so.
Your, your vote.
Your vote.
Is the only one not recorded, Mr. Dressler.
Commissioner Dressler.
So, a yes vote is yes, a yes vote is denying this and to come back with a new resolution and other findings, so. Okay. Alright, so finished with that, we'll move on to board requests. And thank you, um, thank you. Board request, Michael?
I'd just like to say, I would like to thank Mr. Lucas for coming and making his presentation and, and um, I wish you the best of luck.
You'll be seeing me again.
Thank you, okay.
Thank you very much.
And thanks to all of the, the residents that attended and spoke. It was important, I think it's interesting that the, we didn't have anybody stand up to speak in favor, I think that speaks volumes. And that's all I have.
Okay, Barbara?
Uh, yes. I wanted to say thank you very much to the city for the cleanup. It went extremely well for me personally and my neighborhood, and I have had, I have a sawzall and I have a tendency to need to go crazy in my yard and cut a lot of branches and I can't always get them all and trash them, so they accumulate. And so, they helped me with the branches. Adrian made sure that I got help when, when they came on duty that morning. And the young man named Christian, I understand he's new, Christian was an absolute blessing to me. And I'm out there, I am a leaf respire, and it was hot, and I just kept trying to do what I had to do, and he would come over and help me throw them in his truck, and was always watching out for me to make sure everything went well, and always taking care of everybody else that pulled up to the bins. So, I just wanna thank the city, everything went well, and I absolutely appreciate it so much.
Thank you. Bob?
Um, there's a, there's this RV that's been on Needles Highway, on a, on a property on Needles Highway that is evidently can dump or whatever, and it's about, um, it's. It's, it's down from the, from the.
Abandoned?
I've seen people.
About.
Yeah, the gentleman passed away.
That one did?
That owned that big block structure, and uh, he, of course, lives in Los Angeles and the onus has been, been put on his son to deal with everything that's there. And he, the son, um, let a guy stay there, take care, kinda watched over the stuff, and the guy that was staying there just rubbed that out of my face. Or work with the sheriff.
Okay, thanks.
Anything? Kevin?
Um, I've been out of town for a bit, but I just wondered if there's any news on the overpass. On that, I mean, not the, not the overpass, the underpass.
The overpass bridge.
To call DNSF on a weekly basis, we've not been able to get their, and all, all we're looking for is permit.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So, it's a, it's right away, we issue them all the time.
Anything else? Okay, Charles. Nothing, Bill?
I just was wondering if there was any news on the, the new grocery store that was supposed to be coming to town.
Uh, last week, Madam Chair.
Yes.
The, the last contact we had with uh, Mr. Hill is, he said between, that it'd be available between Halloween and Christmas.
Oh.
So.
Well.
But everything, all the contacts have all been positive.
Good news.
Good news, yeah. Great, anything else? Will? No? Managers report?
No.
I don't have anything, so I'll, I'll ask for an adjournment.
I'll have to adjourn.
Second, okay. Thank you all for coming.
Aye.
Yeah. Ross?
Yeah, I'm, I'm a little confused.
Yeah, and you do the uh.
My, my.